Clearly, the events of last night have shaken most of us at really, really, really deep levels. The recent events that have occurred in our city in terms of the shootings over the last three days are great for, call us for a great, great, great sorrow in our city. And not to mention the lives that are impacted by this careless and reckless behavior. So this time, what I'd like to do is I'd like to ask everyone to stand and observe a moment of silence as we pray for our city. Thank you. There will be no public comment during this meeting. Our chief will brief us, and on the rash of shootings that have followed, we'll be followed by a series of questions and answers from members of council. I'm asking council, please allow me to recognize you before speaking, which is a department from our normal procedure, but just given the nature of the commentary, I feel like it would be best to have a little bit of traffic coordination. And after the Q and A, the chief will have a, brief us on future plans and development, and then there'll be followed by a press conference on the fifth floor a little bit later. So this is an ongoing process. This is not an event, so I think everybody needs to understand that, that this is something that we need to evolve to and get to a place quickly, but at the same time recognizing, again, that it's a process and not an event. So with that, I'll ask our city clerk if she'll please call the roll.
Here.
Blackwell?
Here.
Joiner?
Here.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtrych?
Here.
Bullock?
Here.
And Miller.
Walker's here, I don't know if he reported that or not. Okay, at this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Chief Hassel.
Good morning, Mayor, members of city council, city manager, and of course, all those who are here in attendance. I'm here, of course, to give an update on the recent increase, or the recent events that has been occurring across our city. And what I would like to first say is that as I know many of our citizens are concerned with the, I'm gonna say, the number of violent crime that has been occurring in various places of the city, I too am concerned. My staff and I are seriously making sure that we're doing everything and taking all of our resources to ensure that we are properly and thoroughly investigating each one of these incidents, and to ensure that we bring those who are committing these crimes within our city to justice. I thought it may be appropriate for me to give an overview of the recent events that have occurred, an update on each of these incidents, starting with the most recent, going back in time. One, the very most recent would be this morning at 4:24 a.m. We got a call of reported shots fired, or aggravated assault on the 300 block of Casey Lane. Officers responded to that location where they did find a vehicle that had bit into some kind of motor vehicle accident, striking a tree. There was no one at or around the vehicle at the time, but at the scene, they did find there was some bullet holes in the vehicle. We did find some items on the ground that had some blood stains on it. Officers immediately got our blood canine to the scene, where a successful track led us over to an adjacent street in the Mobile Home Park, where we were able to identify the two passengers of the vehicle, the driver and a passenger. The driver being the Mr. Albert Cosum, and a passenger, Mr. Jokelvis Ford. There was no injuries from the gunshot wounds, but one did sustain an injury that appears to be apparent from the wreck of striking the tree. That investigation is ongoing. My officer's still likely on the scene processing it at this time. On May 6th, at Wesleyan Boulevard, at Chili's, at 7:10 p.m., my officers and I did respond to a shooting called at the restaurant, where when officer arrived on the scene, we found two gunshot victims. One male juvenile, who was a worker of the restaurant, and one female. The female victim, 38-year-old Natasha Berry, was pronounced later deceased at UNC Nash Healthcare. The 15-year-old juvenile, who was struck by a round from the suspect, was later, he was treated at Biden Hospital, and was later released to his parents. Immediately after the shooting, officers and detectives quickly identified 25-year-old Natika Battle. She was the suspect in this incident. Immediately after firing at least two rounds, where one striking Ms. Berry, killing her eventually, and pronounced dead later, and the juvenile, officers quickly identified her as a suspect, and she was later taken into custody. The preliminary investigation determined that this suspect and the victim were known to each other. The 15-year-old, as I said earlier, was an employee, and he was inadvertently struck by that round fired by the suspect. Ms. Battle was charged with first-degree murder, attempted murder, and going armed to the terror of the public, and was remanded to the Nash County Detention Center under no bond. On May 5th, on 800 block of Long Avenue, officers responded to an aggravated assault at 2:35 p.m. Officer responded to the shots fired on that block. Moments later, we received a 911 call of a vehicle had crashed into a residence on the 900 block of Marigold Street. Preliminary investigation has determined that the vehicle wrecked due to fleeing from a suspect who was shooting at the vehicle. The occupant, Michael Lyons, of the wrecked vehicle fled the area before officers arrived, but returned a short time later. Lyons admitted to being shot at before the crash. The victim, Michael Lyons, was interviewed by detectives. No arrests have been made in that investigation, but the Major Crimes Unit is seeking suspect information from anyone in the public who may have information that'd be successful for investigators to have to lead to a successful apprehension of those involved. May 5th, on Sunset Avenue, there was a homicide. At approximately 8:35 a.m., officers responded to the 1900 block of Stone Rose Drive in reference to a shooting with injury. When officers arrived, they located the victim, 20-year-old Javonte Crandall, in a sedan's passenger seat. Crandall sustained a fatal gunshot wound and was pronounced dead at the scene. Additionally, the sedan's driver suffered a gunshot wound to the hand. The preliminary investigation has determined the shooting occurred at the intersection of Sunset Avenue and May Drive. The homicide unit quickly developed the 19-year-old Antonius Clemmons Jr. as a suspect in this incident. Clemmons and the victim are known to each other. He has an active arrest warrant for first-degree murder and attempted murder, which was taken out by our homicide unit. Clemmons has not been located at this time. The homicide unit, along with the U.S. Marshals Task Force, is actively seeking him at this time. He has been entered as armed and dangerous in the National Crime Intelligence Center On April 30th, at approximately 11:20 p.m., Rocky Mountain officers and I responded to a report of shots fired on the 300 block of Middle Street. While en route to the area, officers and our staff in the 911 center received a call from a second caller advising a female victim inside a residence had sustained a gunshot wound. 44-year-old LaShawn Evans was transported to UNC Nash Healthcare, where she was later pronounced deceased. A preliminary investigation determined that unknown suspect fired gunshots into this residence, striking Ms. Evans, before fleeing the scene. On this particular investigation, no arrests have been made at this time. The motive is unknown to us, but our homicide unit is currently tracking down leads and suspect information, possible persons of interest, and we also, in this case, ask anyone in the public who may have information to please contact our homicide team. Unfortunately, on April 30th, another homicide, at approximately 1:30 p.m., was fired, gunshot fired, was at Hampton Block of Virginia Street, which is Martin Luther King Park. When officers arrived on the scene, they located two shooting victims. One victim was pronounced dead at the scene. The second was airlifted to violent medical for further treatment. Our detectives and the homicide unit developed 18-year-old Ronnie Slade and Jermaine DeBree, or DeBrew, I'm sorry, as suspects in the fatal shooting of Roderick Battle, 24-years-old, and injuring Tyler Frank, 19-years-of-age. The preliminary investigation has determined the incident to be related to a drug deal going bad. Both were charged with one count of first-degree murder and one count of attempted murder, and were remanded to the Edgecombe County Detention Center with no bond. On April 23rd, unfortunately, had another homicide. At approximately 9:20 a.m., our officer responded to 900 block of Drew Street for an assist EMS type call in reference to two unresponsive juveniles, who were both pronounced dead by UNC Nash Healthcare. Officers upgraded this incident from a suspicious death to a homicide. 21-year-old Zahira Zahira Noel and Amin Butler was charged with two counts of involuntary manslaughter and two counts of felony child abuse. Noel and Butler both received $100,000 unsecured bond. We are still actively investigating this and wait, known autopsy reports from our medical examiner's office. On April 23rd, aggravated assault, at approximately 1:50 a.m., officers were working at one of our nightclub's Gators Sports Bar, and reported shots fired in the establishment's parking lot. Additional officers arrived on the scene, locating four gunshot victims. All victims were transported to local hospital. From the investigation, we learned that a fight ensued inside the establishment. The fight was broken up by security officers or security guards hired by the establishment, who is doing the attempt to break that fight up. One of the guards was injured, but the fight spilled over into the parking lot. Our Major Crimes Unit identified 26-year-old DeQuan Marshall as a shooter in this incident. DeQuan Marshall is still at large. He has currently have active warrants for four counts of active, active warrants, sorry, for assault with a deadly weapon inflicted serious injury with the intent to kill, and one count of assault with a deadly weapon inflicted serious injury. We also ask anyone watching this video feed, if you have information, to please contact our Major Crimes Unit. On April 22nd, we had domestic aggravated assault. At approximately 10:50 a.m., our officers responded to a shooting in the parking lot of Pizza Hut, located at 111111 Fairview Road. The victim was transported to a local hospital for further treatment after suffering a gunshot wound to his arm. The victim and suspect, in this case, are brothers. Our Criminal Investigations Team, along with our Major Crimes Unit, identified 29-year-old Quan Johnson as the suspect. The shooting is domestic-related. Johnson is the brother of the victim. Johnson was charged with the following: assault with a deadly weapon inflicted serious injury, possession of Schedule VI narcotics, and discharging a weapon in the city limits. He received a $10,000 secure bond, remanded to the custody of the Edgecombe County Detention Center. On April 16th, another aggravated assault, approximately 1 a.m., shots were fired in the parking lot. Officers located 27-year-old Avon Donovan Tillery, who was struck by gunfire. Tillery was transported to UNC Nash Healthcare with non-life-threatening injuries. No arrests have been made in this investigation, but our Major Crimes Unit is seeking suspect information from anyone who may have information to share. Please contact our Major Crimes Unit, or of course, as always, Crime Stoppers. On the 13th of April, we had aggravated assault. At approximately 10 p.m., officers responded to a shooting with injury at the 400 block of Magnolia Drive. The 33-year-old male Jamal Whittaker suffered a non-life-threatening gunshot wound. This is a domestic-related incident, and all parties are known to each other. Whittaker was treated and released from UNC Nash Healthcare. Our Major Crimes Unit developed a suspect, 31-year-old Antonio Richardson, as a suspect in this shooting incident, whereas on April 18th, the U.S. Marshals Regional Task Force, with our RPD detectives, arrested Richardson for assault with a deadly weapon with the intent to kill. Subsequently, a search warrant was executed at the residence of Richardson, where he was staying. That's where officers located a stolen firearm, reported from Greenville, North Carolina. Richardson received a $60,000 secure bond, and was remanded to the custody of the Edgecombe County Detention Center. On March 6th, we had homicide. At approximately 2:54 a.m., we responded to reports of shootings, or a shooting with injury at 708 Westwood Drive. When officers arrived, they located an unresponsive adult male lying in the front yard. Officers began CPR until EMS and first responders arrived on the scene and took over lifesaving measures, but unfortunately, the victim, 30-year-old Kreshawn Gorm, was pronounced dead on the scene. Our homicide unit is still actively investigating this case. No arrests have been made at this time. On February 25th, another homicide. Approximately 11 p.m., Rocky Mountain officers responded to a shooting with injury at 1821 Northwestern Boulevard Executive Inn. When officer arrived on the scene, they relocated an unresponsive adult male suffering from a gunshot wound in the parking lot. The victim was identified as 30-year-old Dominique Barnes, who later died from his injuries. Our homicide unit identified and obtained warrants on 35-year-old Chardon Whitehead for first-degree murder. On the 28th of February, 35-year-old Chardon Whitehead was arrested by the U.S. Marshals Regional Task Force in Greenville. He was remanded to the Pitt County Detention Center with no bond for first-degree murder. Additionally, he received a $100,000 secure bond for shooting into an occupied dwelling. Our investigators are still following up on some things with that case. On February 6th, we had a homicide. Approximately 4 a.m., our officers responded to a ShotSpotter activation in 400 block of Madison Street. When officers arrived, they located 33-year-old Anton Armstead lying in the roadway in front of a pool room with apparent gunshot wound. The homicide unit identified 26-year-old Rashawn Knight and 23-year-old Marsha Griffin in the shooting death of, identified those two, rather than the shooting death of Anton Armstead. Rashawn Knight was arrested on February 6th, receiving a no bond for first-degree murder. Asaya Griffin was arrested on April 7th by our homicide unit and U.S. Marshal, the U.S. Marshal Regional Task Force, with assistance of the Greenville Police Department. He received no bond for also first-degree murder. On the 23rd, near the beginning of the year, our first homicide. At approximately 3:10 a.m., our officers responded to a shooting with injury in the 2300 block of Hurt Drive. Officers arrived, they located 17-year-old Tyrell Arrington inside a residence. Arrington sustained a gunshot wound and was transported to UNC Nash Healthcare, where he was later pronounced dead. Later that evening, investigators charged 17-year-old male juvenile with felonious accessory after the fact. He was transferred over to the juvenile detention facility. The name of the juvenile has not been released. Homicide unit also identified a second 17-year-old juvenile suspect who was charged with second-degree murder in connection to Arrington's death. He was taken into custody on January 26th. The juvenile also was remanded over to a juvenile detention facility. What I've just given a brief overview of is the recent, over the last three weeks, acts of aggravated assault involving weapons where someone was injured, and from the beginning of the year to now, which accounts for 10 homicides. I will just note that all the crimes are violent, and it raises concern, I am sure, that reverberates all throughout our city. The same is occurring within our police department. The men and women of this department also is truly concerned about these acts of violence. And as I said previously, they are working tirelessly to identify those who are committing these acts of violence on our streets and throughout our city. The majority of these incidents are not random. I know saying that does not necessarily ease concern, but they are not acts that are randomly occurring within the city. The majority of these identified suspects and victims were known to each other. They are acquaintances. Of the five recent violent aggravated assaults involving guns resulting in someone being injured, going back to, I think, April 13th, and the 10 homicides to date, four of the victims and suspects were validated gang members. Of the 10 homicides, eight has been solved. All identified suspects have been arrested, except for 19-year-old Antonius Clemmons Jr. from the Sunset Avenue homicide. Of the five aggravated assaults involving guns with injury, three have been cleared by arrest, with the most recent one this morning still under preliminary phase of the investigation, the one that hope happened in the Mobile Home Park. I wanted to talk about some of the things that we have currently have been doing with the Rocky Mountain Police Department to deal with these acts of violence in our city. We have an active violent crime and gang unit. We have recently instituted enhanced focus patrols and identified high-crime areas of our city. We recently, in the last several months, at the end of last year, implemented FUSE's platform and technology, which integrates multiple technologies into one screen to assist us to quickly identify persons and individuals committing these acts of violence in our city, and obtain invaluable video evidence to give us more insight of what actually occurred. That system alone has been successful in bringing a number of individuals to justice, and bringing a lot of valuable evidence to help in their prosecution. Coupled with that technology, we also have a few license plate readers throughout the city, which has also been instrumental in identifying vehicles and suspects involved in these crimes. And for a while now, we have had the ShotSpotter system, a gun detection network in a certain part of our city, which has been instrumental in getting officers to the scene more quickly, and of course, getting there quicker. We have identified individuals attempting to flee the areas and bringing them to justice. Next steps. Due to the recent series of violent crimes, I have increased the number of officers that are on patrol to cover their entire city and all four patrol districts. It started immediately, and that is, there will be extra officers throughout the city in all four patrol districts for an undetermined amount of time, or at least until we start seeing a decrease in the number of incidents we have occurring across our city. We have assigned more officers to work alongside with our violent crime and gang task force to concentrate even more efforts into those identified high-crime areas of our city that has been delivered to us by our crime analyst within the police department. I want to just also make the council and those listening aware, we have strong collaborative partnerships with our federal partners, just to name them. The U.S. Marshals Regional Task Force, 10 years partnership. Alcohol Tobacco and Firearms ATF for 15 years. Homeland Security for two years. And our longest federal partner, the Drug Enforcement Administration DEA for 30 years. I have already had multiple, before these recent incidents within our city, conversations with our U.S. Attorney over the Eastern District, Michael Easely Jr. Our conversations have led us to have discussions about what are our current strategies that we are implementing with our federal partners that affect our city. I've had similar conversations with our district attorney, Robert Evans, and we had already had a meeting coming and set forth with our federal partners, with our U.S. district attorney and our district attorney, Robert Evans, next week, to discuss our current strategies that our federal partners are working with us to deal with gun violence, to deal with drugs, and any other violent crime that these type activities bring to our city. It is my goal, as the police chief for the city of Rocky Mountain, to go into those meetings with an agenda. What are the outcomes, what are the results of our partnerships with our federal partners? How are our partnerships and how are these outcomes affecting the crime that we're seeing in our city? And the goal is to have results. The conversations with our U.S. attorney and our district attorney is one of collaboration and partnership, which we've already had, but that focused goal is to make sure we turn all of our efforts for all of our federal partners and our state partners on these rise of incidents that we're seeing in our city. And we hope after these meetings, we will be able to announce something at a later time on what would be our new focus and strategy that we'll bring forward to hopefully give some peace and sense of calm with our citizens, within our city, and that our citizens deserve. At this time, I will open myself up for any questions our members of city council or our mayor may have.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions? Councilman Joiner.
Certainly. Thank you, Chief, for your report, and thank you for the collaborative work you're doing. There's a lot of trauma within the community. Is there any support that we're giving the families of both, the victim family and both families, to try to help them through some of this trauma, and hope that we could some way gain support from both families, and what we can do to support them in our community, and being a little bit more proactive on the information that's out there, that can give us some heads up on some of the things going on? I know that there is a lot of groups here, OIC and other groups, that offer therapeutic opportunities for the trauma victims, and both families are victims. Have we looked into any of that type of process?
Well, first and foremost, my heart and prayers are for all the family members of victims of any of the aggravated assaults and gun violence in our city. And my heart really especially goes out to the family members who have lost a loved one. We've had 10 this year, just over going into our second quarter. So my heart goes out to them, because losing a family member, that is some void that is hard to fill. Don't know if you ever can feel it. And my office, along with my officers within major crimes and homicide, and our federal partners are doing all that we can to hopefully give them some sense of justice, knowing they may not feel that void, but at least knowing that the person who perpetrated this crime will have their, be faced with whatever punishment the courts would deliver. As far as services, the Rocky Mountain Police Department does have a chaplaincy program. Our chaplaincy program is not just for our officers and staff, who witness and see a lot of heinous incidents that occur within our city, but they are also there for our citizens who are indirectly affected by this violence, the victims, the families who are left behind. Then our homicide unit, our investigative team, they will make sure that the information connecting victims to the victim's advocate in our county is made, so make sure that any services that the victim's advocate can make to those victims, the family members of those victims, is delivered to them. Now, is there more we can do for our families and victims? I'm sure there is. So as you briefly said, if there are organizations within our city who offer services to family members, I would love to get a list of those consolidated, so that way, when my investigators or my officers are having that interaction with those family members, they can give those lists of services to them that hopefully they will find some use.
I don't know if...
You have a question? Yes, Councilmember.
I would know if it would be city manager, HR department, that would can kind of help direct some of this process, that we can set up more therapeutic opportunity for both end families, to help us navigate through some of this trauma.
We are preparing our budget now for the coming fiscal year, and we have been talking about engaging services that could supply support for both our officers, people involved in law enforcement, but also people who are victims, families connected to the victims of these crimes. So you'll be seeing something about that later on.
Thank you. Councilman Blackwell?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I'll respond to what our councilman Joiner stated, and I'm not hawking... I respond to what our Councilman Joiner stated, and I'm not hawking services, but OIC has been providing full-fledged mental health services along with integrated behavioral health services and primary care services for a number of years. We have a full battery of psychiatrists, psychologists, licensed clinical social workers who have multiple perspectives. We also collaborate with several other community-based health, mental health entities who are all in Rocky Mount, from Rocky Mount, who do phenomenal and incredible work. And together with the three entities that I know about and OIC as well, we're probably collectively serving no less than thirty thousand people with mental health services as well as substance use services. What has not occurred has been an aggressive proactive collaboration with law enforcement entities across the board. And what our internal team has determined after working with all of these things is that we're going to roll up our sleeves and pull together our own resources to come to the table or come to the spaces where we need to come, but we need access. And when I say access, that's just an open mind. What I would also say is that what I hear, and I don't know about your things that you're setting out, but many of these are unrelated. Many of these appear to be unconnected to each other, but also I hear stress, I hear declining family relationships, I hear the inability to process problems within each other's spheres without resorting to violence to resolve the problems. We can help on that end. When it concerns an issue in an infrastructure in our community that other cities are dealing with as well, because you keep saying other cities, Greenville, I hear. I hear when I look in the paper and see where people are coming from and where they're living, they're coming to Rocky Mount to do something. So my question is, what are we doing to ensure that we disrupt this process of drugs and things that are not healthy for community development and to build up our city? Are you saying this federal task force will help identify any dots connected with guns that are illegal, with trafficking that is illegal, and then look to deal with the root of it? Or are we just waiting for the manifestation to sort of crop up and then we deal with it as we see it?
No, sir. Our partnerships with, more specifically with the Drug Enforcement Agency or Administration, DEA and ATF, through their intense investigations, they do look at those incidents that are occurring within our city. For example, we have gun violence. If the individual has a history of violent crime and there was a felonious act, then if they meet the criteria and looking at our, what level of punishment or crimes they're being charged on the state level, if they can be taken federally, we are doing that. We have taken a number of individuals federally and taken them off the streets here in Rocky Mount. So if the crime fits and it meets the guidelines to go federal, we are doing that. We also, in addition to working with the DEA and our ATF, we also have our dedicated narcotics unit and specials investigations, who also target and do drug investigations throughout our city. That team, along with the violent crime and gang task force, work under the same division, working with those task force officers and other federal agents who work on those teams to ensure that they assist us in bringing the resources that we need to identify those who are partaking or participated in drug activity and also gun violence within the city. I do say, you mentioned what more can we do to help the trauma that's going on within our city? I open and accept that invitation to come sit at the table to any of our organizations who feel that there should be some conversation held with the Rocky Mount Police Department and my staff and how we can make sure that we're making that connection. Many times the acts of violence, you're going to have our first responders, our police officers going to be there first. They're going to be there at the beginning of the investigation and throughout that investigation. We hopefully through those conversations with the victims, one, the prior is identifying those who are committing these crimes, but also doing that interaction with those family members. If we see there is a need, we need to try to fill that need. We do that by connecting them with the services in our community, not necessarily doing ourselves, but do our part to make the connection. So I do welcome that conversation. If we and the department can do more to make sure we're connecting our victims' families and victims who are surviving these acts of violence to the right services.
Thank you, Chief. Councilman Knight?
Heard you say that you're having conversation with federal partners, but are we or you having conversation with local partners? We do have two former police chiefs that are, live here within Rocky Mount, and I want to know, have you actually had conversation with those chiefs that have been in our community for a very long time? I'm also interested in knowing exactly who are you talking to other than federal partners? We know that you come from the western part of the state, you're not from this area, and I think a lot of information could come from local people and former police chief. I think that at this point, the mayor and the council, that we should call a state of emergency and ask that you would do a high intensive enforcement, and we know what that means. And what is your plan? And I was hoping that we, the council, would have got a copy of the plan. I hear you stated what your plan is, but if I were to pick up the phone tomorrow and call one of your supervisor, would they actually know what the plan is and how to implement the plan to address the violence in our community? The next thing I want to know about our juvenile curfew. We had instituted a curfew a while back. Is the curfew being enforced? And at this time, I think if we have this high intensive enforcement, it would show that we are seriously being tough on crime at all levels. Also, far as guns, we had the buyback gun program, and I don't know if we are still doing that, getting guns off the street. But it's very important to me to be having conversation, not just with federal agency, but with your council members and your former chiefs that have been here, and I know how many years that each of them have had in this city, and local partners, because a lot of times we know things that people may not know. And federal and local working together, I think that we can get a lot done. But I'm asking you that you put your plan in writing, and I'm asking this, and I hope the other council members will ask as well, and that we see it written and that we can see it, and hopefully that your officers will see it, know it, and how to implement it as well. Thank you.
Thank you for that question, Councilman Knight. There's a lot there. I'm going to try to make sure I hit all of it, so please forgive me if I missed something. You had mentioned some retired police chiefs of the Rocky Mount Police Department. Have I had conversations with them? Unfortunately, had there been an actual sit-down with the two retired chiefs? No, one is still a member of the Rocky Mount Police Department on our roster, and I have had conversations with the other retired chiefs, not about necessarily our crime, but on other things that have come up in a conversation between me and that chief. Local partners, we do have monthly meetings with all of our police chiefs and our two sheriffs here in Edgecombe and Nash Counties. We meet monthly to discuss challenges and issues that we're facing in our respective jurisdictions and how we can work together to deal with those concerns, because as we all know, crime don't see boundaries and jurisdictional lines. They cross those lines. They go from one city to the next city, from the city to the county to the next city. So we do have those conversations. When I came in as a new police chief, I had a meeting with two of, both of our sheriffs in my office as the new chief, conversations of collaboration, partnerships, what we can do to work together, have a stronger bond between the three agencies. I recently, just maybe a few months ago, had another meeting with our two sheriffs, with our top drug supervisors of all three of our agencies, our agency, Nash County Sheriff's Office, and Edgecombe County Sheriff's Office, to have that discussion about further collaboration and partnerships when dealing with the drugs, because we know drug dealing and acts of violence, again, like I just said, don't see jurisdictional lines. They go from one city to the next. So we have been having those conversations. Our state partners, the SBI, alcohol law enforcement, we do have conversations with them. There will be upcoming meetings with them, how they can also have a role to play in our upcoming revised plan of action with the recent acts of violence in our city. We, as of this weekend, we have one of our state partners who's working with our officers this weekend. I would prefer not to say exactly what, but they will be in our city, helping to deal with some targeted things of concern that we have already asked them to look into for us. Curfews. Nothing has come to my desk, so I don't know exactly if I could answer that question for you now, but I would get an answer for you. Have we been having issues of juveniles violating our city ordinance or curfew? I can't answer that, but I will look and see. At the moment, I can't say we have a high number of juveniles after curfew, but I don't want to say it's not an issue if I don't know, so let me look into that for you. You mentioned the buyback. We did three buybacks several years ago. I want to say maybe ten years. It's been multiple years ago. Nothing of recent. That has come up in a conversation last few days to be considered as a possibility, but we want to look at the effectiveness of what we did those years ago. What did we get from that buyback? And did we see a directed result or outcome that was beneficial in seeing less guns get into the hands of individuals in the streets who are committing these violent crimes? So once I can research how those three buybacks went some years ago, then hopefully we can have a decision on whether we're going to institute something like that similarly going forward. If I missed something, sir, please... Oh, yes. I will make sure I present to the city manager's office our current plan of action. I talked about what we have implemented currently for the recent issues of violent crime in our city. I will give that to the city manager, which he can then share with the city council and the mayor. After our meetings with our federal and state partners and our district attorney's office next week, I will ask, just give us some time to reevaluate what we're doing together and how we could do more focused attention on the issues that we're having here in Rocky Mount. Let us come up with that plan. I have a draft of some things that we're going into the meeting with, but I want to make sure that we're all in agreement of that. And once I get that plan in writing and a commitment from our state and federal partners and our local partners, who will hopefully be involved with this, I then can present something to our city manager who can share that, and hopefully we can share that publicly.
Thank you. Councilman Daltch.
Mayor, and Chief Hassel, I want to say thank you to you and to your staff. You know, you're responding to what's provided to you, and unfortunately, you've been given some tough things, and I know this city councilperson, I think all of us appreciate what you're doing and your staff. But with everything, we all can improve on anything and maybe look at things differently, and none of us up here, we have you as the experts, we have the, you know, the police forces, the experts, y'all the experts, we're not. But we do each represent our wards, and we do each represent the citizens of Rocky Mount, just like you do. But, you know, in previous meetings, we've talked about the drugs and the gangs, and I know we can do a better job of going out and identifying gang members, and I think you've admitted to that, and hopefully we're going through and doing that and also enforcing the laws that we have on our books, even as minor as they may be. We don't, we don't necessarily want to, you know, I wouldn't want to ruin someone's life necessarily for minor incidents, but they tend to go and get more and more and more. And also, this goes with code enforcement, quite frankly, Mr. Manager. We need to do some code enforcement out there because I think that's important. And I'm glad that we still have our federal partnerships regarding the guns, because we do have a gun issue. We do have a problem. And until folks are, you know, until we, right now, they're going through the system and getting out before your officers can even write up what's going on, and that's a shame. And I personally am advocating that our local folks, the bonds of unsecured bonds for certain things are just, I'm appalled, and I think the public's appalled. And hopefully with your conversations that you're going to have with our judges and our magistrates, that we can work through that, that the bonds are commensurate with the crime. And I know you do not set the bonds, but, you know, people are being arrested, you're doing your job, and your officers are doing your job, and they're getting out, and the question is, are they getting out and committing more crimes? And I think when you're arresting other folks, the other problem is, when you're arresting folks and we read in the newspaper or get a press release from the city, you know, that they have pending court cases. And so the court cases keep on being extended and extended, and these folks are out committing more crimes, and that's a concern. So hopefully, when you sit down with our magistrates and our judges and our DA, you bring that up. And, you know, we, Rocky Mount is, as you well know, we're in both counties, Edgecombe and Nash County. And we're all aware that not just the city of Rocky Mount and not just the fire department or the police department, we have issues with hiring, and it's not just Rocky Mounts across this country. So, you know, I'm glad that you have the partnerships with the federal folks, but I think, you know, received a memo of the number of officers that we're short, and you're trying to fill those as hard as you can, and we recognize that and appreciate that. But hopefully, with the, we can partner more with our sheriff's departments, and if we're not, please let me know. I mean, if we are, please let me know. And you mentioned that you are, but I would like to see, you know, the deputies and our officers riding together and doing, and going in there, because the Rocky Mount citizens are paying Edgecombe County taxes and Nash County taxes, and, you know, we do follow that, and if you need some help, it's not a sign of weakness, it's a sign that we've got a problem and that we need to do something about it. And I don't know how you feel about that, and I would like to, maybe during your monthly reports, you include some of your partnerships and the successes that you've had. And I know I've asked a lot, but we, the public is scared, the public is upset, the, you know, I know these are, you're saying these are not random, but in the mindset of the public, people are scared, and they have a right to be. And you're doing everything you can do and so are your officers, and I appreciate that. But, you know, I'm just wondering, hopefully you can address some of these, especially when it comes to the bonds and running through the judicial system faster, as fast as it can be, and giving people, people deserve fair trials, there's no doubt, but, you know, and I was at an event one time recently, and someone said, "Stay in your lane." Well, I'm in, I'm in my lane. I'm for Rocky Mount, we are for Rocky Mount and Edgecombe and Nash Counties. And we've, and we're, you know, we have been approached to build, you know, a courthouse. And so I'm getting in my lane, because if we're being asked to build a courthouse, you know, that involves the bonds, it involves the trials going through quickly. And so I'll be quiet now, but maybe the partnerships and address some of the gang stuff, and hopefully we're working on that more.
Yes, sir. Let me go through that, and hopefully I don't miss anything. The drugs and gangs, you are right, we did put more resources in how we investigate and look at gang members and gangs within the city of Rocky Mount. We have since, over the last several months, have placed an officer into the position of an intelligence officer who is responsible in making sure that we review the files of all our validated gang members here in the city and all of those gangs that have been identified that are operating or committing issues and crimes within our city. Her job is to make sure that any information that comes from what our officers are seeing in the street or we're getting from other entities who share information to us about validated gang members goes into our database, so we know who the players are within our city. And that information is shared throughout the department, throughout, by the way, of retaliation-type reports. For example, if we have an incident with our city as they're shooting, aggravated assault, and we have identified that some of the, those who are in that... and we have identified that some of the, those who are in that or involved in this situation are members of rival gangs, that retaliatory report is shared with our staff to make sure that we are able to try to hope be proactive in preventing another act of violence later. We do have, of course, as I mentioned, a dedicated narcotics unit and special investigations. We have tried to put more officers, and they're working overtime, working with them, doing drug search warrants in our city. We do a number of those within the city. So they are doing their best locally with our own people, and also working with the sheriff's offices. There have been occasions where Edgewood or Nash County will have a drug investigation within the city. You will see a Rocky Mount detective there. And the same applies when we have a case. We will call them. Hey, we're looking to execute a search warrant of a location within the city. Do you have someone who wishes to come over to assist us with that? And they have done that. You talked about the low bonds. That was a conversation at our last chief's meeting this past Monday. The chiefs in attendance, Sheriff Atkinson was there, a member of Sheriff Stone's top staff was there in his absence, because he was tied up with another meeting, but Sheriff Stone was there, I must say. He has been there. Low bonds have come up, not just in our local chiefs' conversation and the sheriffs, but other meetings I have been involved with, with other sheriffs and chiefs across the state. That's not just a Rocky Mount issue, that is an issue that many of us in our profession are seeing, that the bonds are, in our opinion, many times don't fit the crime, and they are getting out many times before the officers are finishing the paperwork. I want to just also reiterate that I am having conversations with the sheriffs. Just last night, I had a conversation with both Sheriff Stone and Sheriff Atkinson. I went over and told them of my plan, that we have extra officers on the streets within our city to make sure we can ensure our citizens know that we are on our streets, and we're doing everything within our power to be visible, to hopefully curtail some of these recent violent issues and crimes we're seeing in our city. And I had that conversation with both the sheriffs, that your area car, have their supervisor contact my on-duty commander to ensure that we're talking. And that way, if we need their assistance, they can pull that deputy or deputies to come assist us in whatever it is we may need assistance on here in the city. So we are having conversations between the sheriffs and I, and doing whatever we can to make sure we have a strong relationship between the three of our agencies.
Thank you.
Can I just follow up just real quick?
Yes, and then Councilwoman Miller.
And the reason I state the sheriffs is because I realize that what you just said is accurate, and you've got the officers working overtime, but unfortunately, they're going to get tired, and they're probably tired now. And that's what, that's my worry. And so that's why I bring that up. Don't, please don't take it as a criticism, it's just more, I'm worried about our officers, and as you are, and because they've got a lot of work to do, and they earn every penny, and frankly, we as a city council probably need to find more money for your officers and for the rest of the staff.
Thank you. I'll recognize Councilwoman Miller, then Councilman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mayor. We are looking to the police department to solve societal problems. These folks committing these crimes didn't become criminals overnight. We don't know all the different causes that led them to their doing, but there, at one time, was an eastern Carolina mediation center that worked with young people in the schools, or even older people that got into conflict with neighbors, and helped them talk through their problems so they didn't resort to violence. I don't think any of us would pick up a gun and shoot somebody of some of the things that lead to the incidents we are hearing about. But when you don't have better tools to deal with it, your gun is your easiest resort. I think it's a lot like manufacturing, when you expect quality control to build in the quality that was not put in at the beginning, that was not installed in the process when you were signing the product or laying out the equipment, and that's a little late. We're trying to get you all to build quality control into our people, and it needs to happen much earlier than that, from the cradle even. And I know there are so many societal issues, whether it's problem of broken families or poverty or whatever, but we appreciate all you're trying to do. And I don't feel so much scared, and I guess I should knock on wood when I say that, because I tell myself I'm going to avoid those situations that lead to this. And I've for a long time told my adult children not to be out in the wee hours of the morning, nothing good happens there. But a lot of these incidents more recently have been in the daylight, in the morning or the afternoon, and when you expect nothing bad to happen. So thank you for all you and your police force are doing, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Miller. I don't think I had a question there, but I will at least say this, that out of all the incidents that I gave a summary on earlier, all those incidents, the victims and suspects did know each other, there was acquaintances, but there was one who did not. And that was that 15-year-old juvenile who was hit last night in the restaurant. And I understand as not just a police chief, but as a father, a grandfather, a husband, a person who loves his family, I understand that the concern the citizen has that it could have been one of us in that restaurant who was not involved in the things that were going on, but just doing their job, literally, and was hit by a not intended bullet for him, but a bullet nevertheless struck that young man. And I'm just so thankful that he has been released to the hands of his parents, but unfortunately, we did lose a life there. And I'm saddened for her families, who are now suffering that loss. But of all the other incidents we've had that I went over recently, and the majority of our incidents are not random acts, but last night, there was a 15-year-old who was randomly hit with that gun, that round.
Councilman Blackwell.
Thank you. Chief, I do want to say to you that all of Rocky Mount wants to work with you. This is an incredibly supportive community, and for all of our differences of opinion, we rally around the greatness of Rocky Mount. And if you just look at the numbers of people that are here, the very diverse audiences here, we got business owners, we got pastors, you know, we do have a former chief, Chief Manley's sitting out there. We got community members, and everybody is here that wants to know what can we all do. So what I do hope you receive from our conversations and communications is that we have a city that is willing to be mobilized to protect our city and our loved ones. And I am concerned for my fellow councilmembers and our mayor and our team, our entire team, that this is not the narrative that's communicated about Rocky Mount, that we are a place where people, you know, it's okay to come here and shoot them up. It is not okay, you know? And I hope the message that gets communicated is that if you come here trying to wreck us up, you're going to get wrecked. You know, what I hear is that everybody, with the exception of maybe one or two cases, has been, the perpetrators of the crime have been arrested, they've been charged, and for those that have not yet been found, they're being hunted down. And when you come in here trying to destroy what we're all trying to build, we might have different ways of building, but everybody here is building. And when I think about the energy that's taking place in our downtown communities, this is a graduation weekend, people are going to be having cookouts and parties and gatherings in their homes, it's Mother's Day weekend, you know, we'll be out grilling in the back and celebrating our moms and our grandmoms, and nobody wants to be worried about a bullet flying, because somebody doesn't have good sense. So what I agree with is that we all, I like what Councilman Knight stated about a state, can I just revise, Councilman, if you, can I change your nomenclature just a little bit? Instead of saying a state of emergency, can I say at the city council level, we can't do what you do, as Councilman Daughtry said, you all are the professionals, but we can look at a declaration of safety for our city. I think all of us can say Rocky Mount is going to be a safe city, and we want to know what can we do to help make it safe. And I think that we can all call for mobilization in our different areas of influence, that we are demanding our communities, our families, our churches, our businesses, our nonprofits to be collaborative and to work together to support. We also are building here in Rocky Mount a culture of progress, and we are, you know, we just heard news yesterday, didn't we, day before, that Rocky Mount's one of the fifth best places in the country to buy a home?
Fourth, Councilman, don't cheat us.
Okay, fourth, okay, so we moved, okay, fourth, one of the fourth best places in the country, you know, to buy a home, and what for us that means is not just buy a home, but to live in a wonderful place. So, you know, as far as a narrative of this being okay, it's not okay, you know? And for those of us who represent communities of color that have often been marginalized and not had the resources to build things up, we'll be working in our communities as well, because people who do things that should not be done are not going to find safe harbor in our neighborhoods. They're not going to find safe harbor in places that have been abandoned. You know, I'm actively, and we're actively calling for everybody, if you know people, if they're in your family, they're in your acquaintance network, call somebody, we need some numbers, you know? And I think this is what Councilman Knight is saying, in that declaration, that we know what we can do too, not just what you can do, but what can we do, and how can we support? And then finally, the other thing I will say, I really embrace this idea that you have a kitchen cabinet of people that you can go to, and I think it's phenomenal that we have former police chiefs that live here, they can help explain to you what worked in. I know times are different, and things are different, and administrations are different, dynamics are different, we understand that. But to be able to call upon the people that have sat in, that have stood in your shoes, you know, that know what it feels like, I think is incredible. And to know that you got that kind of support to build upon for yourself is to be heralded and embraced, you know? And I think we would all support that. So that's all I have to say.
Can I just add something, Councilman Blackwell? You are right, it's not okay. Myself, along with every man and woman who wear the badge for the Rocky Mount Police Department, and every admin support staff, my telecommunicators, even down to our administrative secretaries, we take seriously these acts of violence in our city. We feel that we have been tough on crime, but I'm also mindful that we don't know, I don't know, everything. So I hear loud and clear, I have had conversations in the past, I will have additional conversations with those, our past chiefs, I will have continuing more conversations with our sheriffs, with our local partners, with our state partners, our district attorney's office, and our federal partners, to see, to make sure what are we doing now, and what more can we do to be even tougher on crime, and making sure we're reducing these acts of violence on our city streets. And that is my goal and my commitment. I want to also make sure, I just say, that when violent crime occurs in our city, I am not a chief who sits home, takes a phone call, and get an update. I come out. I come out on every homicide and major shootings in our city. That is how much of a concern it is for me and my top staff, and the men and women who are on the streets dealing with these issues. I welcome those conversations, again, sir. As I say, I don't know it all, I don't proclaim I do. I can put a plan together, I can measure the results, we're hoping to get the outcomes. We don't see results, go back, revise, let's try to make it better to get the results we need. That is crime reduction. That is that conversation I want to have with our federal partners. And I know, we hope that we can come up with a stronger plan, a stronger strategy, that hopefully, we can share publicly going forward, and how we're going to address some of our violent issues. Because it is my hope, hopefully coming from this, is I want to go on and just say now, I'm hoping that we can talk about some kind of task force, put together with our local and federal partners, led by the Rocky Mount Police Department and our partners together, to deal with these issues on our streets, and have those measured results that you talk about, sir, to make sure that whatever we're doing, whatever strategy we have in place, that we're seeing the difference in the streets. So I open again, anyone who have conversations they would like to have with me, I open and welcome that, or any ideas of things that maybe we're not doing, that they feel we should consider, I would like to hear what that is.
Thank you, Chief. I'll recognize Councilman Joyner, then Knight, and then Councilman Walker. I'm sorry, I didn't see you. WB, please, I'll recognize you, and then we'll go to Joyner, Knight, and Walker. Yeah, Councilman Joyner. Do you want to speak?
Okay.
Yeah.
I want to make a couple comments to everyone, not just people sitting up here, but not just here, that gang with the reason the bullet was going. First of all, I would like for us to remember all of the people who are involved in these things. We talked a long ago about the victims. There's more than one issue with the victims. They have lost, others have had losses, and we, the citizens of Rocky Mount, are victims, and we have suffered losses in many ways. I would like to say that we all extend our thoughts and our families to all of the people who have been involved. Victims, the perpetrators, and you people who have supported our police department and our city, and all the other people who are involved. And I would like to say one further, further thing. I think one of the things that each of us, not just these people, will have one year in the next short period, bring our religious community. Talk to your pastor and your fellow church members, and see what we can do. We can be more supportive in every way, and we need to involve the religious community in every thing that takes place in this wide circle. Just if nothing else, just say a short prayer, a homily, a devotion, and you know, we know, our children, officers, the group, for the complete investigation all the way out, and we thank God for that, and they're in our thoughts and part of our lives.
Thank you, Councilman Boyd. I'll recognize Councilman Joyner.
Thank you so much, and thanks, Mayor, for calling this gathering today. Thank you, Chief. I do want to say that I'm thankful for all of the collaboration of all of the law enforcement and everyone. I'm hoping that we will have just as stronger collaboration with being proactive in a therapeutic way of looking at preventing these crimes at a stage of community. So I'm hoping that we will hear what has been said, that our community really wants to be involved. And I'm hoping that we would see that even the person that perpetrated or committed the crime, that their family need just as much help or help as the families that the crime been perpetrated upon, and that in some way, we will open the doors for both ends, help for families, and that we would see ourselves being able to reduce sometime the pun- And that we would see ourselves being able to reduce sometime the punitive approach and increase in the therapeutic approach in our process as we go forward. And, and that in some proactive way, and looking at the communities and looking at people in a, that I don't think nobody want to raise their children to commit a crime or be a victim of crime. So if we can, 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 with the agencies that are here, faith-based, and thank you for your chaplaincy process, glad to be a part of it, thank you for the collaborative piece of the bike riding patrol that you set in place with the sheriff department and the police department to get back on the streets and the walking process in the community, that we would build these relationships with our community. And I believe we have an 800 line that people can call in on and, and ask for help. I think, Sid, manager, we do have that.
I don't know if we do or not, I'll have to find that. We do. Do we have an 800 line?
I'm not familiar with a helpline, 800 helpline, but I can definitely look into that and get it out.
If we do not have one, I would encourage us to have an 800 line where our citizens and our families can call in on before it become punitive and, and keep it at a therapeutic approach. We see a lot of mental health, you ride through the streets, you see people walking on the streets, right? And they need help, right? We got to stop ignoring people that we see walk on the street every day and looking for drugs and looking for things. They are victims. And we need to, we need to be able to respect them in a way and give them dignity and give them help. So if we could do that, I don't know if we have opportunities, our, you know, our, our homeless situation, our bastard system situation, if we can put that first and help our people at the level before they become angry and victimize other people and become victims. And thank you for today. I hope we leave here with the courage that we can make a difference and we will make a difference.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Knight?
Yeah, I just want to say that, just listening to everyone and the chief, I'm a parent and I have a son, and thank God he didn't give me much trouble. And sometimes people have different ways how they consider raising their child. Time out, no lunch money, or, or no play money, no arcades, no TV. But every once in a while, you might have to jack him up. I feared my daddy. He had his rifle in his room above the door and dared us to touch it. I had fear of my father. When I got a teenager, I would get a little, thought I could, you know, tussle up at him and my mother said, I'll tell your father, but when he got home, he mowed my floor, if anybody ever knew what that mean, and jacked me up. And so when we got this call, notice, emergency meeting from the mayor, I was hoping, and I like you as a chief, that we would come out swinging today. We stated 14 cases, whether it was random or not, people knew, that we are not going to tolerate it here in the city of Rocky Mount. The headline should be, tough on crime, we not going to put up with this mess in Rocky Mount. You know, we, you know, articulate this and that, I can't tell them, you know, about their demeanor, but if you dealing with criminals and drug dealers and gang bangers, they not going to pay that any attention until you put fear in their hearts. If you come here, and I can't say what I want to say because these pastors out here, number one, you will be a buh buh buh, you know what I'm saying? You got one sheriff talking about gangs, drugs, and guns, then we got one in Edgcombe County doing that. We got to say, Mayor, of Rocky Mount, and like Ruben said, this council, which we oversee, the manager, and the manager oversee you, we ain't having this in Rocky Mount. We got to articulate that and be very, very strong about it. I'm not saying this go out here and just knock people upside the head, but I, what I'm saying, it has to be articulated in a way that people know that we are not playing. And so we see on social media, they blaming council, blaming me, blame this and that. But it's, we can sit here all day and talk about the systemic issue of what's going on, mental health, property, what's happening in our schools, what has happened in America that created these social ills and mental health that we have to deal with for the last 400 years that caused people to do this. We can talk about all that, but at this time, if we're going to call it an emergency meeting, when they read the paper in the social media, it should be state of emergency, we ain't having this, and whatever Ruben said to amend it, what did you say?
Declaration.
Declaration, see, them guys put these words in here and it's all fancy stuff, but these folks got to understand, we ain't having it. And I'm not going to belabor the point, but you got to say it in layman's terms where folks, they may not understand and can hear all that, understand what you're saying, but they know you're not playing. So I hope that we leave here today, Mayor, and Chief, and Council, saying, we ain't putting up with it. We're not going to put up with it by any means necessary. Thank you.
Councilman, after one. Councilman, Councilman Knight, we ain't putting up with this.
Say it again.
We ain't putting up with this.
Put some force in it. You be the mayor saying.
I know, I know. I want to recognize TJ Walker and then Councilwoman Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. And Chief, this, what we have in the city has absolutely nothing.
Sir, can you speak up? We're not here.
Yeah, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
This, the issue we have, seriously, it, it has nothing to do with our, our law enforcement. They're doing a great job.
Exactly.
Our law enforcement cannot stop what's going on in the city. Clearly, you know, even with incident last night in Chili's, where there are cameras, where there are witnesses, where there are people, we're living in a day where there is no regard for human life, there's no, there's no type of, there's no type of, there are no sentimental values of, of any type of understanding of being able to share and, and unite as a community, even as a, even as a council. And I'm, I'm saying this because we got this special call meeting for us, and I'm sorry, I'm, I was not able to be there. I did a wedding in Charlotte, North Carolina, and I'm still here. But even for us as a council, if we look at our meetings from a leadership perspective, you know, we don't set the tone for, for unity and for peace in a city. You know, our council meetings, you know, at times get way out of line, and, and we're the leadership of the city, at least the perceived leadership of the city from a political standpoint, leadership of a city. And so, you know, my comments are not to Chief, not to the law enforcement, not to the police, but I encourage us, because we're living in a day where my generation is influenced by the music that we listen to, we're influenced by wanting to, there are so many people that social media wanted to fit in, you have, you, we, we, you have people that are excited about killing people. They want to be known as a shooter, they want to be known as a killer. You know, that, that, that's the generation we're living in, you know, and it's, it's a, it's a new day, a new time, and I know it's not something that we've seen historically in our city, because this is not how our things have been, but this is the generation we're living in. We have, we have a generation that is, is heavily influenced by social media, heavily influenced by music, and, and, and dealing with a lot of historical trauma. Again, I think Councilman Blackwell spoke to it, we still have to address in the black community, the historical trauma that we face. Nobody wants to deal with it, everyone wants to move on and say it's not an issue. There is a historical trauma that the black community faces. Reaching back from slavery and even beyond, and, and talking about American slavery, that we face, there's a trauma that exists in the black community. And we can't, we can't continue to, as a, as a, and this is not a Rocky Mount, this is a nation issue, we can't continue to try to act like it's not a problem. This is a real issue. You have individuals that were hung on trees and demasculated, individuals that had to walk streets and, and, and see this type of brutality to humankind. And we think we're going to fix a problem, this, this is not, this is a problem that was created centuries ago. We're not going to fix this today. But what we can do as a council, what we can do as a leadership, is start saying, we can start working together. We can lead in peace and in unity. We can start from the front. I, I encourage all of us, they're not schools in all of our wars, but I encourage all of us to pick a school that your constituents attend, these young people attend, and just spend, spend some time at the schools. You'll, you'll, you'll see what's really going on. You'll see the issues our kids are facing, the trauma they're facing, coming from, from split homes, coming from two-parent homes, it's not just a single-parent home. We've got individuals that are, that are suspects, suspects of crimes right now, coming from two-parent homes. And I, and I hate to say it, but I think with all of these killings we have and all of the homicides we have and shootings, this is the black community. This is us. And to my, to my white counterparts, the way you guys can help is by saying, what can we do, first of all, to help? What can we do to help? Let's figure out what can we do to help? Because this is, this is, this is not something that started today, we've been having killings in Rocky Mount for years, since I graduated high school, this has been going on. It's at a high rate right now because it continues to increase, and this is nationwide, it's not just Rocky Mount, it continues to increase because we have a generation influenced by music, influenced by culture, that has still not addressed and dealt with historical trauma that was caused centuries ago. We're talking about a people that, that, a, 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 a culture, a, a, a black culture that created civilization, the most civilized people known to this nation. Black people were the most civilized known to this nation, back to the creation of time. And we cannot overlook the slavery, the brutality that took place in America that caused this That was the cause of this trauma in America. And there's nothing we can do to really, you know, we can't go back all of those years, but as a people now, we've got to figure out, how can we work together to say, we don't want to put up anymore? Councilman Knight, Mayor just said, this city, we're not putting up with the crime, but what are we going to do to talk about, what are we going to do to put up with us uniting as a people? This is bigger than a crime issue. We got a problem. There's a problem in this world. We don't pray in schools anymore, we're taking God out of politics, we're taking, politics are, it's all about greed and control. We have got an issue. It's not just about this crime, Chief can't solve it, the police department can't solve it, the sheriffs can't solve it. They can be on the scene, you can have a cop car at the scene. It's not going to stop a bullet. You might catch the criminal. But we have a real issue. And until we say, we want to band together as a people, we want to find ways to unite as a people, whether we like each other or not, we don't have to let hate into our hearts, jealousy into our hearts, because that's where the enemy takes control. We can still say as a people, we would do the best of our ability to work together. And I must admit, I've had times where I've even allowed my own heart to be filled with I must admit. But from this day forward, I am praying, I'm making a vow to God, God, touch my heart, touch my soul, to be more like you, to love you and to love people. And until we get to that place where that's all of our prayers, we're going to continue to see this. The Bible says, if my people will humble themselves, seek my face, turn from their wicked ways, these are all wicked ways, I've got wicked ways. We all have wicked ways. But until we turn from those, seek God's face, he said, then and only then will I hear from heaven and heal the land. I'm appreciative of the meeting, I thank Mayor for calling. But until we start treating each other like we want to be treated, this only spills out, you know, we're the council, so we, we, we're not going to kill each other. But our words, our actions, our behaviors, it's just spewing out into our city. I challenge us all, seriously, find a school within your ward, or where your constituents attend school, and this is going to be my only comment for today, because we can't, we'll be talking to next year about what needs to be done and what can be done. But each council member, Mayor, even manager, attorney, find a school within your ward, find the school that your constituents attend, and spend a little time at that school. You will see firsthand the issues that are going on today in our society. But individuals want to see us, they want to see us, they want to see their leaders. And it doesn't have to be about a, a, a race, it doesn't have to be about election time right now. Find a school, find a place where we can make ourselves visual. These kids, this community, I am telling you, when they see us, meet them where they are. It changes their perspective, it gives hope, it provides vision. The faith that we carry spills over into their hearts and their lives. And I know we're all busy, but seriously, take some time visiting the school. And we will see the issues we face, but not only that, we will start to see some changes in our community. When leadership says, you know what, I'm going to sacrifice a moment of my day to go to our schools with our babies, just look at, look at the demerger conversation we got, we're having a conversation about splitting school systems. And we think, we think, it's, I, I rest my case, but in, in, in all sincerity, I love each and every one of you. love each and every one of you. If there has been any harm or anything said that I've done to anyone, forgive me now. Moving forward, I want to move in peace and in love, and even the disagreements, I want to move in peace and in love to unite the city of Rocky Mountain. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Walker. Um, are there any questions left for the chief? I want to be sensitive to the fact that he's had a very long night. He, we've had him here at the stand for an hour and a half, and if there are any questions, then I'll ask you to stay. If not, uh, you have a question for him, Councilman Knight?
I mean, urgency, and I think if members have something to say, we need to stay as long as we can. And, um, I respect what every council member has said. You know, God of our weary years, God of our solid tears, but, you know, they have to fund our schools. You know, we asking for peace, but we asking for justice, because no justice, no peace. And the president of the NAACP, and going back to the history of our people, um, we cannot even discuss that today. All I want to know, are we going to declare this as a state of emergency? Are we going to say that we are not going to tolerate this? Are we going to declare this as a state of emergency until we have a plan with results? We can have another conversation about race in America? You know, Jesus was hung on the cross and traded by his disciples over four thousand years ago, way before four hundred years, two thousand years ago, excuse me. So what I'm saying is, you know, we need to have that conversation to, uh, council members, but I don't think any of the council meetings that we have had has caused anybody to go out here and shoot anybody. I just want to make that clear. And the reason why we have had those conversations, because we were trying to get equity in these neighborhoods that have been overlooked and inclusion. So I think we need to have another discussion about race in America and how it has affected the people. And, but today, I want to talk to the chief and the mayor and the council, that we declare a state of emergency until we get these killings and violent crime under control with a written plan of action to this council member, to the council members, whether you give it to the manager or whomever, that we can see and that your staff can see what you just articulated, and that if we pick up the phone and talk to anybody, a supervisor, a lieutenant, a captain, that they can echo the same thing that you just said, and that we all be on one accord when it comes to crime. And as I said, we have to say that in a matter in which people understand and believe that we mean what we say. And that's all I'm asking. We call it an emergency meeting, but I think we need to go beyond that until we can get this under control. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Why don't you just have a seat? Well, okay, well, Councilwoman Miller's been waiting in queue, and I, again, I'm just trying to be sensitive, because, you know...
You can sit and answer my question.
Well, okay, why don't you just have a seat, Chief? I mean, I, I feel bad that you're standing there at attention for so long. I know it's been a long night. I know you've got plenty more in front of you. Uh, this time, I will, uh, recognize Councilwoman Miller, but I think the question is, do we need a motion? Does a state of emergen... First of all, I'm, I'm fully in favor of declaring that, but I'm not sure it achieves what we're trying to achieve, um, but, uh, I don't know. Uh, maybe Jeff, you can give us some... I, I think maybe it's more like, do we have a curfew? Is there actual action plan? State of emergency typically, when I've declared it in the past, allows us to have access to federal and/or state funds associated with...
State of emergency on crime.
Well, we could certainly do it from a symbolic standpoint, and I, and I'll be happy to make that, uh, declaration.
You, you, you have that authority.
Yes. Well, I hereby do declare a state of emergency for crime.
And declaring something doesn't change the facts that exist, and we, we've got some really positive news about our city, and that's what we would like people to focus on. You accentuate the positive and minimize the negative and do what you can to, to change the negative to the positive, but you don't create banner headlines about a, a state of emergency in Rocky Mountain. Do what needs to be done, but you don't have to declare an emergency. Make yourself feel good.
Yeah. Thank you. Sorry, we've, I've already declared it, right? I hear you, Councilwoman Miller. I'll ask Councilman Blackwell, who you'll afford to you, and, uh, is there anybody else who wants to speak after this? If not, then I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Councilman Blackwell.
Thank you. Um, I really had a, um, a, a quick question about the weekend and the plan for the weekend, but I also think I got a recommendation for that state and that, um, for our declaration of safety, however we want to do it. But, um, for the weekend, this weekend coming up, we know, you know, a lot of things happening. Uh, we understand, as you stated, that you have increased the presence of, um, police throughout the city.
Yes, sir.
Um, we got certain areas where we know people will be congregating. You got Rocky Mountain Mills, you got downtown. Will there be any additional or in heightened, uh, police presence? Will the sheriff's departments be included in this effort of policing? Have, are they working with you to patrol or is it, what, what do, what do business owners need to do? Do we need to work better with private security companies? You know, I'm sure every restaurant now in town is probably thinking, well, what could I have done better on, on that, on the planning end? And again, I'm not trying to advocate for an overpolicing. I just want to ask, from the public's point of view, what kind of, um, expectation do we need to have or what's the protocol? Are we concerned? How do we communicate to our community that we're going to have a safe weekend, you know, while things are in place and in play? And then on the secondary, that's, that's your question. For our issue, um, and I agree completely with, um, Councilman Joyner as well, because I do want to say, you know, I lead OIC, and, you know, Councilman Walker talked about school, well, I, I work at a school, you know, and, and ninety-nine percent of OIC's high school equivalency students are gang affiliated, but we have never had, we got all kinds of folks, Bloods, Crips, everybody else. And you know what we have? We have ninety percent graduation rates. No, we have, we don't have fights in the streets or fights in the hallways or graffiti. We got people learning trades, we got folk getting placed in jobs. We have one of the most successful programs in the country with the Department of Labor related to working with adjudicated youth, from young people from sixteen to twenty-five that have justice-involved past. We have helped a hundred of them or more obtain certifications and careers, and they're taking care of their families, they're owning businesses, they're opening up companies, and they're working for other companies. So, you know, I don't want us to also stigmatize young people who have not seen traditional places where they get support from as if they're bad. Some of these young people have turned to gangs because they didn't have family structures. So for every young person, gang doesn't mean a bad thing. It means somebody fed them, somebody clothed them. The problem we have is a small percentage of folk at the very top. I don't want to say top of the gang, I don't know what their problem is, but they don't mind taking from people, they don't mind killing people, and they don't value their own lives. And that's where we say, you've got to have a no-nonsense policy, which we are seeing you implement. Uh, but I do feel, Mayor, that it would be good for us to maybe have conversation about how do we put support around this community? How do we create a mental health table? How do we create a workforce development table? How do we create a, how, when we have housing tables, we just got to move on it. You know, how do we create other support systems? You know, WB talked about a faith, you know, engagement. You know, how do we mobilize our community, give everybody who wants to work and do something a way to do it officially with the city? We're all doing it ourselves, but if you want to collaborate with the city, there needs to be a way that people can engage and communicate.
I couldn't agree more, and let's, uh, let's sit down and try to figure that out, right, collectively and, and try to promote that. So, um, what I'll say is, thank you all for coming to this meeting. I think it has been very good. I appreciate you, Chief, and all that you're doing. I know that you've had an incredibly long night, and you have incredibly long days in front of you. Uh, know this, that we are here asking what we can do for you, what resources would be appropriate for you to get your job done as effectively as possible. Um, we believe in you, and I have faith that we're going to be able to move forward in very positive ways in a, in a difficult time in our city's history. So I just want to thank everyone for coming here. I want to thank councilmen and women for responding to a call at seven twenty or eight o'clock last night to, to pull this together. Uh, but again, I think it's been, uh, very, very, very important that we communicate where we are, what's going on, and understand that the process of trying to bring forth a, a better outcomes, we are working on as a community, as a city, and as a leadership team. So thank you. Yes, I will recognize you.
I will make sure, I just, I will say that our plans of action, I will have those submitted to, um, our city manager, and I will have the additional plans of action once I meet with our partners, and I will sit that, submit that also to our manager for sharing. Um, I would then also just like to say, I know, um, Councilman Knight, um, I, I don't know if it was, I'm the eloquent one, I don't know, I'm, I'm just a little country boy from Martin County, but you're right, maybe I didn't say it in the way I should have said it, but we do not tolerate crime in our city. I will say that. Um, much of our crime in our city is not committed by our citizens, but some is. But if you commit crime in our city, I guarantee you, every man and woman in this department will find you, whether you're here, whether you go anywhere else in this country, we'll find you. We will make sure with everything within our power and the partners who work with us, we will do our best to bring you back to justice, no matter where you may go. Um, so I just wanted to make sure I say that if I didn't make that clear earlier.
That's the perfect conclusion to this meeting. I now adjourn the meeting.